Brian, are you ready?
Uh, yes.
Alright, I will call to order the June 13th Committee of the Whole Meeting at 7:37 PM. Item number one is KRC update from the Recreation Director. Come on up to the microphone, please.
I have some hat.
Ooh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, basically, what I did is I just kinda did a little bit of information, some stats, kinda where we're at with some of our classes, so I'll kinda go through it. Personal training clients, we have 76 right now. Joe Mar has 31, Maran says 29. Avery, she started on May 30th and she has 13 already, so, kinda excited about that. And then I have one undecided because they were with Tyler, so they're waiting, trying to figure out who they're gonna go with now, so.
Tyler's leaving?
He's gone.
Tyler is leaving or something?
Oh, Tyler left.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, Tyler left on May 28th, so Avery is our replacement. She's an exercise physiologist and we're quite proud to have her, she's very good, so. Some of the classes that we've just wrapped up and we are doing right now is we finished our very first WW1, it was Wellness Wars, and we had 12 participants in that class out of taking 12, and it was kind of something really fun that we kinda made up and decided to do. It was more, we always do Mission Impossible every year for people who are trying to get active and get into shape, so this was the other extreme of it. It was trying more of a fitness competition with strength and cardio to see where you're at, so it was our first one around. It was a lot of fun and we're hoping that we can do it next year, so it'll be WW2 next year, so. We're offering yoga right now, we have seven in beginners, nine in advanced yoga, and then we have a spin class still going on, which that spin class is totally full. And then since Avery has came, we offered a bikini boot camp, and I just have to share this 'cause it's kind of exciting, so we had asked Avery, you know, what kinda class would you like to do? She said, "Let's do a bikini boot camp." We put it out at about 4 o'clock on the Wednesday. By 6 AM on Thursday morning, we had 28 people fill all the spaces, 'cause there was 20 spaces available, we had eight on the waiting list, so Avery said, "Can I do another class?" We said, "Sure," so she scheduled another class, and out of 40 spaces, we have 45 people in that class. And it filled up within a matter of days, so it's, people are in demand for our classes and I like to say we think we're doing really good, so. We're also running all of our minor sports right now. In total, we have 500 kids in our minor sports, 270 in soccer, 125 in ball, 87 in ball hockey, and 26 in lacrosse, so we have a lot of kids that have programs going on, a lot of volunteers, a lot of people helping us out, so that's really good. We also have a bronze medallion course going on, that's kind of your second step to becoming a lifeguard, so we have six out of six participants in that one. And then we can, swimming lessons going on too, which that's 55 kids out of 70 spaces, so, we're kinda busy right now. Some of our programs that are in the works is we are working on July 1st Canada Day. We do kids games and strong man, strong women competition, it's a new thing that we're doing with the AIC Society. We also are supporting the TPCRC, I say right, with some of the other things that we can help them with, with Canada Day, 'cause they're very short staff as well, so we're just trying to work together, all of us, to have a great Canada Day. Our kids camp information has gone out, we had a summer student start today, so that's July 4th to August 26, not 16. And then our summer kids carnival, we picked our day, it's July 23rd. We have a soccer camp, which is August 15th, August 19th, and then we'll have summer swimming lessons going on so far. We're also doing a summer tryout class, so, I know they've been busy making up classes to put this on through the summer. Sometimes during the summer, we don't get too much of a strong commitment at the Wellness Center for classes, so we're kinda doing some try evenings, so, ones that are confirmed are a TRX class, Drums Alive, a parent and baby class, so that would be like whether it's strolling or workout with your baby. Anyone Can Lift class, yoga and wine, and much, much more.
I'm just gonna order the wine.
You know what? We're signing you up, Randy. Basically, you come, you come and you do yoga for about an hour, and then the other hour is wine tasting, and it's all about wine and, 'cause wine's a very spiritual drink, so, I'm loving this class, I'm gonna, I'm gonna teach it.
We're looking for spirits.
I've never done yoga, but he is, we're really good now. She's gonna do two tryout classes this summer, and right now she offers it in Flintflawn every Friday night, so, it's going very well. She's done it twice and I think she's doing every Friday night in June, so, yeah, it's probably, we're gonna hopefully pack the arena, or we'll have to go to the Escala, 'cause they're licensed. So, but yeah, so that's, I don't know, kinda exciting. And then we also have, we're gonna be planning an NLS course, which is a lifeguarding course, and then a WSI, which is the instructor's course for the pool, so that's also, I'm just finalizing the dates. Memberships right now, we have 863. I put all the months there, so basically from January to May, the members that we've had are highest daily traffic and how many visits we got per month. So, we do go down a little bit, but because it's the warmer season, it's expected it's pretty much the same as last year. The one thing I really noticed this year that is kinda boggling me, but it's a good thing, is we haven't slowed down. Basically, at the end of March, kind of April and May, we really slow down in the evenings. If you go there now, we're still pretty much as busy as we were in February. So, we're, you know, our highest daily traffic for May was 191 people, like, if I compared to last year, it might have been about 130, so it's, we're still very busy and a lot of people are, "What's going on?" I'm like, "I don't know, but I like it, let's just keep people coming and people coming in and out," so, it's really good. Some just awesome things I have to say for maintenance is the wheelchair lift at the rink for the senior seating is working, it's, it works. We still need a final piece on it, we're just needing railing, but that's been a project that's been outstanding for a couple of years, so we're just happy to have it working. The fences are up at the Ball Diamonds, so that's been really exciting, they look pretty sharp. I watched some fastball this weekend and it's, yeah, they're pretty nice diamonds, so, that's exciting. And then the donated playground equipment from Rotary is up at Rotary Park, and there's a couple pieces there that are pretty popular, so, that's kind of exciting. I did pick them out. Can't wait to go there, but no kids are there, so I can play on them.
After wine and yoga.
Yeah, after wine and yoga, it's a plan. And then some other things that we're working on right now is the Moffett Family Fund presentation evening. Last year, we tried something new, is when we presented the checks, we invited the paper, we invited everybody who got checks, or who got funded through the fund, and kinda did more of a positive thing, just to show people what we're doing, 'cause I think sometimes we don't tell people all the good things that we are doing in the community, so that's one of them. Finalizing grant requirements for the Six Week Challenge, the Six Week Challenge wrapped up last week, June 7th, there was 280 people signed up for it, and they had about 60 people at the, well, I think maybe, I guess it was closer to 100, I don't know, there was, the arena was full, who came to the celebration, so that was very good. We partnered with the RHA to do that and TPCRC, I'm like, how am I gonna get them all? So, also working on arena plan for the fall, because the arena will be starting up again, so I have to plan and program for that. Pickleball will be starting, we got all of our equipment, so we're gonna start playing with it pretty soon. Working on final reports for some sport grants we got, working on a fee proposal for the arena and the pool, so that'll be brought to Kelsey Rec and then brought to you guys for the next meeting, so. Advertising in the facilities, we've been approached by different organizations and we're looking at different options to approach or to advertise in our facility, advertise on our Zamboni, more options for in the facility, even the Wellness Center. And then a new one that kinda had come up is the Ball Diamonds, so, there's fences up and so, just getting prices, finding out what other people do and making, trying to get this all figured out, so we can take advantage of that opportunity.
Can I make a comment on that? I saw those emails about the fences, but between that and the boards inside, like, from a, person who buys, pays for the board signs, that'd be nice, so in the winter you have, again, this summer you have boards on the, that'd be appealing, I think that'd be appealing to the local business community, if you package it together somehow.
Yeah, yeah, well, that is a good idea. And then Disc Golf, we have a support committee with KRC that is working on getting sponsorships for nets, so we've, to date, received $500 from the Knights of Columbus to put one net up. I think they're hoping to get about five, and then it'll be, they'll be looking for some land to put these nets up, so. And I think that's about all I've got right now that we've been doing.
Disc Golf?
Disc Golf is like golf, but it's with a disc, so you have these big-
Frisbee.
Frisbee, yeah.
Frisbee Golf.
And you have a big-
You do that yoga, wine, and then do frisbee golf, that's, that'd be fun.
You guys are moving exclusively out of drinking games?
Drinking game programming now?
That would probably have one of those Friday nights. That'd be a fun one, too.
You really wanna increase membership at the Wellness Center?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the way to do it.
I think yoga and wine bring up a lot of people, so, yeah.
I just got a couple of-
Yeah, sure.
Quick question. Ball hockey?
Yeah.
It ended early due to complaints, what had happened there?
Yes.
'Cause I had heard some stuff.
Yeah, no, basically, we had quite a few parents, volunteers, parent volunteer coaches that were coming forward and just letting us know that they were really struggling at ball hockey, because it was starting to become a babysitting service and people just dropping their kids off. So, you know, and it wasn't just one parent, it was quite a few coming forward, so then we thought it in the best interest of the program and of parent volunteers, 'cause so far I have five parent volunteers, we said they will not volunteer next year because of how bad it was this year, so, that's hard, because you only have so many parents that do volunteer and help out, so. I had put it out there and so we ended it tonight, and I've had a lot of people actually come forward with different ideas of how to address that for next year, because we are looking at different options, because we don't want that to happen again, so.
For sure.
Whether it's a volunteer fee, or whether there's something else, or just scheduling volunteers, saying if you want your kid to participate tonight, they, you have to come and help, this is your night, there's no choices, it's, it's a must to be able to be registered. So, we are looking at trying to improve that, 'cause it is too bad, 'cause there was, you know, some kids and parents that were enjoying it, but unfortunately, we don't want our volunteers to start feeling like babysitters and just having people drop them off, so.
I had another quick question, I guess. I know it's the way that things have always been done in town, like with minor soccer and minor ball and that sort of thing, ending kinda coinciding with the end of school, have there been any discussions about maybe extending that, or trying to look at some summer programming and that sort of thing? I just feel like these programs, they're ending so quickly and so early, these kids aren't even getting a chance to learn the sports. I know in Flintflawn, they've started a fastball team or a league, we don't have anything like that in town, and it'd be nice to see other sports rather, that are more organized throughout, throughout the summer, rather than just being one month of sports.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's been any discussions or if something that could be discussed.
We've looked at it. Last year, for example, I had a volunteer come forward to say that they would like to do some soccer, so I said, "I'm willing to continue it." It was basically a free program, it was kinda a come learn soccer skills and drills, and I never had one person come.
Really?
The guy came all summer, every day for one, I think it was about Tuesday nights, and no one came.
And nobody came?
So, I don't know what it is, like, I don't know if we try to do, like, more of kinda how we run our season, try to run it longer, or try to see if we get the volunteers in the help, but I know it's definitely an option, we could, like, if somebody came forward and said, you know, "I'd like to try," I know last year, I think it was fastball, there was a few kids from town, so they had said, "Is there anything we can do to use the diamonds and stuff?" And sure, we'll make it all work, because it'd be great to bring it back.
Yeah.
But I haven't, we haven't thrown it right out there, but we could throw it out there, not opposed to seeing-
Yeah, I don't know, even, it doesn't necessarily have to be fastball, but, you know, soccer, or even softball for the kids, because it's, the more they're involved when they're younger, the more they're gonna be involved when they're older, but.
No, we can look at different options, definitely.
Anybody else?
Great to hear.
Yeah, that's awesome, thank you, Amber.
Yes, I'm glad you were able to make it, thank you.
Trying to keep busy.
What we've done is in the past, we've had Jody and, like, the Chief Financial Officer and also Engineering come here to probably every meeting. Fortunately, we had Amber, then we were able to invite her to this one, because we always had a manager. Is there any manager in particular you want at the next meeting?
I think maybe just with construction season ramping up and that sort of thing, maybe an update from Engineering of some kind, like, just a general update, not on anything specific, but just, you know, something like this. This is, this is awesome, to be able to see what, what's been happening, that's my thoughts on it.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind hearing from Mr. Lejeune, we've got a new-
Yeah, I was gonna say that, too, our new maintenance director.
Do you wanna maybe do Mr. Lejeune first and then do Engineering at the next one, and hopefully some of the tendering stuff will be done?
Yeah.
Yeah, he might, he might come with some great ideas, I love the guy.
I don't know if I know who he is.
Yeah, it would be a good introduction, obviously he's got a speedway, I guess.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. No more discussion, I will move on to the next agenda item, which happens to be Public Works and Maintenance, 2.1.1 is Legion Senataph.
So, basically, what we've had is a request from the Legion, requesting the Town of the Paw to take over the maintenance of the Senataph area. An email was sent to the, it was a client, to the Maintenance Director, asking for their input on this. One of the challenges we have is I know right now they go buy it randomly and they will mow grass with it, however, you almost need a bagger for that area, we don't have that kind of equipment, and again, we've done it in the past, just as is, the problem being we don't do it up to their maintenance specs.
Pardon me?
So, I'm not sure if we, we haven't budgeted to purchase a lawnmower that has a bagger and all the things for a smaller piece of, of property to mow and maintain, so, our basic recommendation is we can run by and do it the odd time we're there, but to keep it up to those specs is gonna require a lot of time and additional equipment. It's sad, 'cause these are all volunteers that helped do this for the Legion, and it is a beautiful, like, they keep it beautiful, and I don't think we're able to keep up with that with our other work on the line.
I'm just wondering what other organizations besides the town gets, like, Green Team students, 'cause that's one of the things that, like, they do. Like, I know when we had our Centennial celebrations back in 2012, I can't remember who we got students from, but I wanna say maybe it was even Manitoga Conservation, and they went in and cleaned up along the murals there behind the railroad tracks, 'cause it was a real, like, eyesore and the railway people just didn't have, like, the staff to send out there and stuff like that, so we did get some Green Team students who, from that organization, who went out and did it, but I don't know if there's any other organizations that get Green Team students that do, like, lawn mowing and that sort of thing.
Part of the issue is the actual having a good, proper lawnmower to bag and, and that kinda stuff, that's, that's a huge issue.
And why's the organizations didn't get their Green Team people?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It was unfortunately bad for the Green Team.
Yeah, it was. I was thinking, I mean, it's Legion, so, I mean-
Yeah.
We, we, I mean, I understand us not being in the, in the position to be able to do it without creating some hardships on our staff that we already have, and we don't have the equipment, but I'd hate to just say no and not be able to kind of give them another suggestion or maybe, you know, place to go.
Down that, oh, did they indicate who else they had asked for help, or where they had gone?
Yeah.
'Cause I think in the past, what we've done is we've tried, as we're going by, to help them out with doing it every once in a while, but to actually put it on a maintenance, like, unfortunately, I think all of us have seen what our grounds look like at times, so, this would be a priority one, especially if you're even coming remotely to the upkeep that they've been.
Yeah.
And again, smaller area, it needs to be done a little more often, and you would require a bagger to have it look as, as quiet as it is.
They indicated in their, in their letter that it's been an ongoing struggle finding people able to do this job.
'Cause they do it right now by volunteer, whoever helps with the Legion volunteers.
I think we kinda just have to leave the way things are right now, unfortunately. It'd be nice to say that we could devote, you know, a couple hours a week and buy a lawnmower for it, but I just-
Brian?
Yeah, I agree with Chad in that, it'd be nice to help, and this, this is one request, but who knows how many others would come forward and that sort of stuff. And the problem is, is, as was pointed out, every time we do these things, it's a little more taxes we have to collect to do it, because it all costs money, and I, I think and hope that they're able to find others within their organization or outside that will help them out, but I don't think the town can take those kind of things on. It seems like a small thing till you start doing it, and then you discover that you spent a hundred thou- hours this summer, or throughout the season, doing it, and it wasn't a budgeted item.
Does anybody else have any comments? Yeah, so I think we just, we need to send, send them a letter, you know, saying that unfortunately, as much as we would love to, we don't have the, the staff or the equipment to be able to do it right now. I mean, maybe throw in there that if time permits, you know, like, we'll do what we've done in the past, and if the guys have time to, to go through there, that they will, but unfortunately, that it's not something that we can commit to at this time. Does that sound good with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. All righty, moving on to item number 2.2, Public Works, 2.21, Two Hour Parking.
This is actually a request form that came from the mayor, so I've-
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just, it's just very great. A lady who operates or renting business on Fisher Avenue, I spent off and down Fisher Avenue, I could only find one place that would have anybody that would have a customer that could be there within two hours. She was looking for a bit of a break, I thought, well, maybe I might suggest to council that we look at, you know, giving some sort of a, a card of two hour, a, a two hour limit, you know, as they abuse it, and of course it gets taken away, but it should be helpful. I couldn't find another, another business that could have a customer within two hours, and it would be very helpful.
I do, sorry. I have customers that sit all day in my shop, people from out of town.
Does anybody else have any comments? Counselor?
Uh, yeah, just a, the general comment, this is, this is a recently passed by law, let's give it a chance to work, and not, and not too quickly react to, to concerns as they come in, 'cause this, this is one, there may be others as we go along. It's one of those things that, that we may not have, as a council, talked to the businesses and asked them, "Well, how, how would this impact upon you going forward?" That may be the kinda thing, says, "Council, we need to look at it and how we do it," but right now, I would, I would say hold back on tweaking things till they've had a chance to, to work.
Sorry, I was just saying, I thought Chris had talked to some of the business owners, but that could be on something else that I'm just, my wires are getting crossed.
I thought we sent out a letter.
Yeah, 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 see, there was.
We sent out a letter, so we're gonna-
There is another, our dressing shop on there, there was also a tax place on there, so there would be a few businesses, so the kind of, it's almost moving backward in what we're doing.
And I think, I don't think that it's, that, that the downtown area is so huge that they couldn't, if there are gonna be more than the two hours, that they couldn't park on one of the side streets, off to the side where there isn't the two hour, the two hour limit.
I'll pass it along to you.
So, sorry, pass what along, what do you guys wanna do here?
Well, I think it's, let the, let the, let the bylaw work its, work its course, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. And I think, like Brian said, like, it's a new bylaw, right? So, any year from now, we might be here having another conversation with four or five issues, I guess, or things that might need to be discussed then, but yeah. For now, let it go. Item number three, Public Safety, there's no agenda. Number four, Planning and Development, 4.1, UCN Clearing.
We had a request from UCN as it relates to wanting to put, it's almost like the Geocash thing that we've had over at the airport. One of my only concerns is this, is looking at some sort of a liability agreement with them. That was one of the hangups we had with the party over at the airport, and what they're doing is almost putting like a little locator and helping lessons with their natural resource management team. So, I don't see that being a problem. My only concern that I would see on behalf of the town would be liability, because once we give them permission to use our lands, if their, you know, if their students and stuff get hurt, it might be part of our problem, and they probably would fall under blanket insurance, so that would be my recommendation, is if they're not hurting anything by being there, and if they need to cut a few trees, so be it, I don't think it would be a harmful thing, but again, I'd be a little worried about someone getting hurt while you're cutting those trees, and people using our property when we give them permission getting hurt.
I mean, they're already, they're already using the property, they, they practice, they're accomplishing through that bush or whatever, so, I mean, if they sign a liability release, the small clearing that would indicate that they've gotten to the place that they were supposed to get to is nothing, you know, they should just be signing some kinda release that says, "Yeah, you know, we'll absolve you of any liability or damages."
Chad?
Um, just, I have no problem with it, I just, in, within the map that they provided, they, they have just pretty big areas that they've, do they have a, a general idea of where within the bordered areas they plan on putting their 20 by 20 clearing, because if they put it right at the corner of, or Dufferin and, you know, and right on the edge of the KC or UCN property, like, I just don't know where the 20 by 20 clearing is gonna be, it's just, we're giving them a pretty wide swath, they can kinda put it anywhere. It would just be nice to know where exactly they're gonna be putting it, I don't-
Basically, everything they're doing is kinda, like, the whole idea is teaching them how to map stuff out, so I don't imagine it would be in a corner of the property, it would probably be through the woods and into a little clearing and find it clearly.
Yeah, okay, alright, sure. This outline-
I don't understand the Geocash stuff, but that's basically the way it works, is they clear a little area, you gotta find a little, like, catchment spot, and it's basically to work your way through the wood, almost like a survival.
Cool. And when you get there, you find a bottle of wine.
Yeah, and people-
So, I have a-
But my, my question was, the sand lined, sand lined area they have, is this all their property?
Well, it's-
That's our property.
The yellow line?
The yellow is ours and red is-
Ours.
Red is ours, too?
Well, I could have, uh-
I thought red was, uh, the province was crown land.
Oh, sorry, that's, that's-
Yeah, red is crown land and yellow is ours.
See, I think, I agree with Jen, I think this would be a positive thing.
Absolutely.
Your studies.
Yeah.
So, we can go forward in saying, as long as they get liability?
Yeah, I think so. Is that okay with everybody around the table?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, moving on, 4.2, Rezoning Application.
Um, we've had a request in for the rezoning of 416 Big No Avenue, and they're wanting to do it from residential single family to residential two families, so they can construct a duplex. This is basically to let you know that on July 25th, there will be a public, or public hearing in accordance with our planning bylaws and zoning law. So, we'll be starting the process of setting up the meeting.
Okay. Um, 4.3, Variation Application, 05-2016.
Again, this is another variation application as it relates to a public hearing, which will be held on June 27th, and this is for, from True Blue Developments, and it's for the, they're gonna be doing a renovation of 330 Fisher, Fisher Avenue for office space in the front, and have one apartment in the back and four apartments upstairs. In accordance with our bylaw, you are permitted to have an apartment unit in the back of your business and on top of your business. So, basically, what we're gonna be doing is looking at the parking spaces, to be reducing it from eight, I think would be to five.
Pardon?
Yeah, yeah, from eights, they're required to have eight, they wanna reduce it to five. So, there is a hearing that will be held on June 27th, notice has been sent to Neighborhood Properties, so this is just a heads up for the meeting.
So, that would be, sorry, can I just say something? So, that would be five suites, so they want five parking spots, so that would be the five suites, and if they wanted to do office space, where is that office space parking going to be?
That's why they're asking for the variation, so, in accordance with the zoning, we carry on with the public hearing.
Okay.
And then, hopefully, the applicant will be here that day to answer those questions.
Okay. Okay. Um, Finance and Administration, 5.1, Town of Snow Lake Host Community Request.
Um, every once in a while in our emergency plan, we do get people that are asking for assistance when it comes to being a host community. We've done this in the past for Snow Lake, at one point we used to do it for Flintflawn and Grand Rapids, and because we have a housing facility here where we have the numerous amount of schools, we have UCN, we have several hotels, we do agree to be host to their community, they have to include in their plan, so we would require to pass a resolution that says we will permit them and we would act as a host community. However, we would expect that they would be responsible for being on the receiving end here, that it would not take away from our jobs and our day-to-day work, they would have to have someone here that would make all the arrangements, we don't do it on their behalf. So, if council's in favor, can we bring forward a resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is being a good favor.
Okay, 5.2, Reimbursement for Travel.
Um, this is basically, as a result of the last meeting, we discussed the travel policy, and we were recommending that the policy be amended, that if the travel van is already going and the person chooses not to travel in the travel van, if they use their own vehicle, they will not get reimbursement for gas. So, this was a discussion the council had at the last meeting, this is the policy that was done, and it clearly outlined in here what the changes and recommendations were, so we would like this to move forward for the next council meeting for resolution to change the- change the policy request.
Is everybody okay with that? Yep.
Well, I guess my concern is, is when we change that policy, we have to be very clear about what we're discussing. It's not just travel, because if you're traveling from point A to point B, point A may be a changing site. Uh, you know, someone works, they're, they're somewhere else, they're going to have to drive their vehicle. But the van was going from the pot to the event, so, sorry, you have to do it on your own steam, because your work doesn't take precedent over the town. And that, I think, you know, becomes a problem when, when we start doing that, and then we nickel and dime, because the end result is, like, why would we even go? Hey, we're not going to go to those things and represent the town, because we're not, we're not being recognized for, for our, our commitment, our volunteer time, and all that stuff, so. Anyway, it's just, uh, something to think about when, when it's looking at how it's drafted.
I, I get where you're coming from, but I would hope that if there was a situation where three or four people were traveling somewhere together, and, you know, one person couldn't leave at 10:00 because they had to work until 12:00, that those, the people that were traveling would, you know, be respectful of that, I guess.
Well, the problem with that, that assumes a lot, and everybody can change, but that's like saying, okay, the bus is leaving at 8:00 in the morning, be on it or walk. Take your own ride. You're, you're getting into areas where you're saving money, but the end result over time may not, may not be what, what you'd hoped for in, in terms of participation by councils.
Excuse me. But is that not why the town got the travel van? Is to get away from this person taking their own vehicle, and that person taking their own vehicle? Like, I know, I know there, like, some people, you, you, there's, you have lots of, on your agenda, but, like, to me, my forefront agenda is, if it's town business, it's town business. So if you want to go, then fine, this is when the van is leaving, and this is the day what it is. Like, okay, some people may have, okay, like, okay, I'm going to put myself into example. I used the town van, and I used it. I did a Costco run. When I went to Brandon, I never, um, like, you and me, Brian, my tongue is so stuck. I didn't bring in my gas receipts, paid for it. This trip, too, I didn't, I'm not, you guys didn't get gas receipts? I just thought it was, like, good principle on my part, in my thinking, that because I got the, the van and made a side trip to Costco, I am not submitting my gas trip, my gas receipts. But that's, that's just my doing, so I just, I just think we have to be careful.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So let's say that there was a situation where the travel van is going, and I'm going to say, for example, Brian is going to the same conference as Chad and Margaret, but Brian had something that took him to, I don't know, Dauphin, and the conferences in Winnipeg, and obviously Chad and Margaret are leaving from the paw. So if we know that ahead of time, could we not just bring a resolution forward for council that kind of overrides the policy in that situation? So that it's situational, instead of trying to create a policy that's going to predict any sort of...
You could probably say that in contravention of the policy, or the policy that you agree. I'm also looking at, there's several times where the meeting starts, say, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, sometimes someone can't get away till Wednesday. And I'll be honest, if you guys are telling me I have to be to conference, and I can't leave on Tuesday, I'm not going to be traveling on my own gas on Wednesday, because that's the day that I'm able to get away. It's part of my duties, that shouldn't, I, I understand where you're coming from with that.
Yeah, I do, too. I think that's a good idea.
Because, yeah, if I can't afford, or if anybody can't afford to get away from their job on that first day, but yet you're still taking in that convention, and the rest of it, there is a vehicle going, I'm sorry, that I shouldn't be expected, or no one should be expected to pay for that fuel for that day.
But like I said, so like, usually in those sorts of situations, you're going to know about it ahead of time. Could we not just bring something forward to council in those times, instead of, like I said, trying to create a policy that's going to predict any sort of future...
Well, everything is prediction, right? That's how you change policy, that's why you have policy changes, bylaws, et cetera, is because you realize things don't work the way you anticipated.
Right.
Just one other comment, my personal vehicle is not the property of the town, you can't assume anything.
That's right.
So if the travel van's not available, and two people are going in opposite directions, who's going to get the rented vehicle? You know, because then you start adding cost to it, because you're saving a few bucks on gas, because you're not, it, it just, the other thing I'm concerned about is if you start doing this, over time, uh, two and a half years down the road, where there's another election, and people want to run, they may look and say, no, I can't afford the luxury of working on that town council, because they don't support you well enough unless you're independently wealthy kind of thing. If you have all these financial resources, then, then you do it, and you volunteer it in. If you don't, then, then you start to have two different groups, one that gives and one that, one that doesn't or can't. And I don't think that's fair to anybody.
I agree with Brian, I don't think that's fair, but maybe another way to address this is, like, if you look at FCM, right? It's four people in, that's probably about $10,000 touch, at least.
This all came about because...
No, Jen, hang on, so I, maybe, maybe we should be limiting how many people are going to meetings, right? We had four people go to FCM. I'm sure it cost over, with per diem and hotels and gas, it's over 10,000, easy over 10 grand.
None of us got reimbursed for gas, though.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that, I agree with Brian, what he's saying is that we shouldn't discriminate against one group or another. What I'm saying is that we should just say, these are the one, one person, one council is going, or only two people are going to this meeting.
We passed a resolution. We passed a resolution, say.
Yeah, I know. A lot of stuff going forward. That's, to me, a more, if we're going to look at cutting costs, that's the way to do it, not say, okay, we're going to nickel and dime around, you know, around gas, right? Because that's not going to do anything. But how we look at the whole situation is what...
Andrew?
I like the policy and procedure. If, I mean, you could, this is death by a thousand cuts if we go for it, except for the lawyer, guys. So it's accepted, and if, if a major exception is required, we'll pass a resolution.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
So we're bringing forward a motion?
Yes, please. Okay, item number 5.3, far, uh, sorry, false alarms in town-owned buildings.
If you recall, this was a policy that's designed to come up with a little bit of a reimbursement for staff getting called in to attempt alarms outside of regular hours. And this policy is basically to say, we'll give you one freebie, anything outside of that is $50. So this was created as a result of the last meeting and the recommendation.
Okay. I, I don't think there's any, is there any other questions or discussion on that? I know we've talked about it once already.
So we can bring a motion forward?
Absolutely. Item number 5.4, cell phones.
This was another item that was discussed, and this is as it relates to, rather than having cell phones for each person that we need to contact out in the field, most people these days have their own cell phones. So we would be looking at something like, not something, we will be looking at the policy where it says we'll charge $15 subsidy for a voice requirement, calling and texting, or we will reimburse, rather than us buying phones. It saves us a pile of money. Right now, we have managers, the manager that was getting $50 a month for use of their personal cellphone. When we looked into the actual cost of the phone, and using for email, calling, texting, et cetera, most times, they don't necessarily need to have access to their email, they're looking at pretty much voice and calling and texting, like, that's pretty much all it is. But the maximum is $25, and that needs to be approved through myself before we do it, so that we don't just reimburse because you need it.
Right.
This is by far going to be cheaper.
I agree.
Any questions or discussion on that? Sounds sensible? Yep. Okay, so we can bring that forward. Uh, 5.5, summer meetings.
So it's that time again when we talk about summer meetings. Um, we're looking at, our current meetings are scheduled for July 11th and 25th, and August 8th and 22nd. I don't know if you guys actually want to be changing it. The recommendation is, we could probably leave it as is.
I'm okay with leaving it to two meetings. Brian? Chad? Two meetings left?
Um, the one other thing is, the meetings for September 12th and 16th, there is a very important seminar for both of us as it relates to information that's about public and freedom of information, and this is going to be taking place on the, pardon me, I think it was the, the last meeting of the month, the 22nd, I think it was. So we're looking at the meetings of September, if we could switch the dates to accommodate this, because both of us would be away at the last meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
So we're okay to bring forward a resolution?
Yes. Yeah.
So you're changing the meetings to...
Yeah, so what would we do then?
To the 12th and the 16th, so we could change to...
No, not 12th or 16th. You have a calendar. Welcome to 19th?
It would be the September, it would be September 6th and the 20th.
Isn't the 6th the Labor Day?
No, the 5th is Labor Day, so we'd have a Tuesday, the 6th, and then the following search, Jen.
Okay. So like, we do the first week and the third week, and then the second and the fourth.
And it kind of works out not bad because of the August meetings, so it actually spreads it out a little better.
So the 6th and the 20th, not the 19th?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll be Tuesday and Monday, not a Monday and Monday.
Nope, that'd be the 6th and the 19th.
The 19th? Yeah, the 19th is the Monday. That's why I was like, what?
Sorry.
It's okay. Okay. 5.6, business license by law.
So a review of this bylaw, and we talked about it, and making some changes that related to some of the issues that arose. So what we've done is, we've added trade show and craft show fees as one event fee to be paid by the person hosting the event. Um, again, in here, farmer's market doesn't pay fees, it's an agriculture business, and that's kind of an across-selling Manitoba goods, et cetera. So we've also updated the forms, and this is for adding information onto our website when you purchase a, a business license. It gives you an opportunity to add a little more onto the website as to how you want to promote your business. So again, this was to specifically make changes to larger group events, rather than charging an individual group.
Just, I had a question. So I noticed in the bylaw, it said that, like, nonprofits and charities would be required to get a business license but wouldn't be charged for them. So I'm just wondering, does that carry over into, like, the trade shows and the craft shows as well? So like, if a nonprofit or a charity were to do, like, a craft show, would they still be required to get the business license for that craft show, or are they exempt from that?
But there's going to be other people that are going to be selling their goods there, so no, it's specifically to say, like, Rotary, if they're having, yeah.
Nope, I was just wondering if it meant that they were exempt from that sort of license as well, or if it was just the actual $100 business license? That was my only question.
Good question. So can we bring forward a motion to...
Does anybody else have any questions? Chad?
Just a quick one about the, uh, certificate of approval from the medical officer of health, like, the public health certificate for restaurants. Are they actually required to have those?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, before they open?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's quite good to do, yeah.
Yes.
So we want to make sure they jump through those hoops, rather than coming back to us and saying, well, the town gave us permission to operate this.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we've been kind of big in the past where we've had someone that wanted to make medicine in their home, and then took it to the RCMP, and it wasn't exactly approved medicine. So we want to be very cautious on what we're willing to do here. So we want to ensure that government acts in a role, and us giving the license.
And those people have a business license.
No, it's fine, I was just, not that I...
Oh, I can't make them do this anymore.
Thought that any restaurant could be operating without a, a public health certificate or whatever, I just wasn't sure what the actual protocol was from the province on it, so.
Okay, any other questions or discussions on that? Okay, so you can bring it forward for a resolution. Um, item 5.7, no, 5.6, no, 5.7, sorry, spray park and skate park maintenance.
So we've had a request for a, a letter of support as it relates to applying for the Canada 150 grant. So in this, we have a discussion several times around the table about the priority, who is taking over ownership of the skate park, of the splash park, and all this other stuff. And we've not really had a lot of information on that. And I did send out an email saying, in order to move forward, I believe it would be good government for us to know exactly what costs we're looking at before we agree to taking over anything. In the meantime, I understand that the person writing the grant had made contact with the grant application people, and they looked at scaling the project down to one. So we would be looking at a letter of support, basically for the outdoor arena, I don't know if you want to add any, any more comments on that ever, but I understand that they've gone down to the one project that they're looking at funding for. So what I'm asking is, any kind of approval from council to write a letter of support for that, that project, which may mean that we're looking at the maintenance of it, and maybe throwing in some extra dollars if we have. If there's any shortfall, I would recommend that we put more money in, because the more money we put in, the more ground monies they get.
And all of the in-kind and everything, like, all of your staff time and all of that council's contributions as well, so.
I don't know, Alan, do you want to add or ramble, if there's anything worrying about that to that?
So not the spray park and skate park, then? It's the outdoor rink that we're talking about? That's the item in question.
Correct.
Correct. Sorry, Chad?
I'm lost here. We started talking about the spray park and the skate park, and now we're talking about the rink, and I'm lost.
So what happened is, we were looking, in order for us to provide the sponsorship and say, yes, we approve this, we'd sent them back an email saying, in order to move forward, we need to know what the requirements are going to be, what, what kind of maintenance, because they want us to take over ownership of all this. So for us to take over ownership, we would need to know what kind of maintenance costs we're looking at moving forward. None of that stuff has been done. So they were going to, they wanted that letter of request from us, or that support for the grant. In the meantime, when I told them this is what we're going to need, I was told that now we are not looking at the funding for that, they are looking at the funding for the outdoor rink. So that's the letter of support we're writing, but we are still having the expectation of, we need this information before we agree to move forward with the approval and support of this. You shaking your head, what's...
That was not the intention of this.
Okay, well, you spoke with them, too, so maybe there's more...
The intention of this, that I had nothing to do with the grant, it came up because of the grant?
Yep.
And we, I was asking if council was looking into the maintenance of the spray park and skate park, because that is the understanding of the skate, the possibility of family community, that the town is taking over the maintenance of the skate park and spray park when it's done.
Yes, and we had asked them to provide us that information, saying, we can't agree to take over any of this until we know what we're taking over. Is there more information to hear from Alan?
No, I'm, there's two things happening here. One, Rotary is trying to spear, but Rotary was trying to spearhead a group that had all three, four projects, really, right? So they hadn't heard anything from the track, the splash pad, and the...
He probably can't hear you talking.
That's all right.
Alan's talking, sorry, Jim.
Um, so there's, the splash pad and the skateboard park are much bigger ticket items to start off with, right? Whereas, we brought forward before about keeping that money... Jim, are you there?
I am.
I am.
I didn't know you were so interested in what I had to say. Can't resist, come on. Um, so there was three, it boiled down to four projects, but Minor Hockey does have some money, right? They've alr, we've already paid to have the base put in, and the land's been allocated, and we talked about having that over budgeted amount being held for a period of time. So that was brought forward. If they're writing a grant, if you're looking at, you know, grant writing, right? So the town's donated land, so that has a value, the base is in there, has a value, Minor Hockey has $100, which has a value, so if you're writing a grant, you're halfway there with money in already. So when you look at doing the grant writing, as sort of what Randy said, well, there's some monies there already to maybe do a project in, in, you know, 18 months, type of thing. Like, you could actually do it in phases, 'cause you could do the base with the concrete, which is big chunk, and then the boards, which is another piece. So from that group, it fell out, well, at this time, this is the one to go for, because I believe Mr. Hups from Rotary was applying for the 150 grant, which is due this month sometime, right?
June 22nd.
So the action items out of this agenda item are that, A, we support the Rotary application for the 150 grant for the outdoor rink?
Yes.
And that, B, we don't support applications for the spray park and skate park at this point in time, because the operations and maintenance costs associated with running that infrastructure, we have not agreed that we would take that on if and when that infrastructure gets up and around.
I don't, well, we don't, I don't necessarily think that's the second part of it, because this group on its own decided that instead of going after money for the spray park and the skate park right now, they're going to focus on the outdoor rink. But I think the issue is, is that eventually, these people are gonna have enough money to build a spray park and a skate park, and they need to know that when it's built, that the town is going to take over ownership and maintenance on that, on those projects. Otherwise, we're gonna have groups that are gonna just have to continually fundraise for maintenance costs and stuff like that, so that's what, that, that's the second part of it. I think the first part is, they're looking for council to give them a letter of support to go ahead with applying for funding for the outdoor rink, and then the second part is, when we get the spray park and the skate park built, then what? And we need to think of that, because if, I think if we're not willing to take over ownership and maintenance of that, we need to let these groups know, because I don't think that they can, and I don't think it's fair to really expect them to.
My email on Thursday basically asked them to provide us with some information that would support what it's gonna cost to operate the spray park, so we can review.
Right, so I, from what I see, the skate park is estimated at zero additional costs except for emptying garbages and recycling, um, and then the spray park has an estimated $18,000 budget, it's hard for them to get an exact number because most municipalities don't track the water that is used, um, and then the maintenance work would be turning the water on in the spring and off in the fall, and then clearing the lines before winter. And again, garbages and, and recycling would have to be emptied, is what they're looking at maintenance for the spray park.
I think what these guys are getting at is that other communities have these facilities. Their has, like, whose job is it to go out and figure out how much these things are gonna cost? To me, it's those groups that are providing and handing it over, who should say, and here's our manual on what it's gonna cost to operate, based on what we see in Flint, Flawn, Thompson, Yorkton, I've never seen it.
A guesstimate, if you look at the...
A guesstimate's not good enough, right?
I know, but what they're saying is, it's really hard, and I mean, I sat on this committee, so I know, it is hard, because every single other municipality, town, city, whoever, has a, a spray park, it's the municipality or the town or the city that takes ownership and, 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 um, provides the maintenance for that. So most of those places don't track the amount of water that goes through a spray park, it gets lost in the 30%, like ours gets lost in 30% that goes unaccounted for, so it's really hard for them to give us a number and say, this is how much it's gonna cost for water, because most places don't track that. And again, for maintenance, most places just absorb that into their, into their maintenance budget, so I've had conversations with maintenance directors, and so I can understand their frustration, 'cause it's hard for them to get an exact dollar amount, because most other places, about five or six years ago, there were, the spray parks and skate parks were a big thing, and the province was handing out money like candy for them, and we missed the boat on that. And so now, we have groups that are trying to fundraise for it, and what they need from us is some confirmation that says, once you have all of the money and this thing is built, that yes, it will become part of our recreation department, is what they're looking for, because otherwise, there's no point in them keep, keeping on going forward, because they're not gonna be able to afford liability insurance for a park, or be able to afford to pay for water for it or maintain for it unless they're, you know, selling hot dogs and cookies 365 days a year, is the sad reality of it.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't think we can go to the taxpayers and say, okay, we didn't know how much the water was going to be, but it's $20,000 a year, so taxpayers, you're on the hook for $20,000. We all need the facts and figures. The I don't knows, I'm sorry, I love the idea of a spray park, I've seen them, the skate park, it's wonderful, but we have to have the dollar amount. We have to have it, it's just a must.
It's there, it's $18,000, again, they can't give you an exact, they could probably give you an estimate of how much water is gonna flow through?
But then I think, yeah.
And then you could figure out what the water costs are, but, I mean, they can't give you an exact, 'cause there's no park here, so they can't say, like, this is exactly how many gallons that we've used. They can give you estimates based on the features that they've chosen, and how many gallons of water are pumped through them, and, and all that kind of stuff, but, I mean, I get where they're coming from, it's hard to put an exact dollar amount.
Then there should be a reserve fund for a few years, 'cause you just can't turn around and build something and give it to the town and say, it's, it's wonderful, I love the idea, but you can't say, I'm gonna build it, here you go. This is where all the projects, and we were talking about when we first got on, all the parks, we build it, here you go, we build it, here you go, we build it, here you go. Then all of a sudden, our costs are astronomical, because this playground equipment is gone, and this playground equipment's gone, and oh my goodness, somebody's gonna get killed over here. It's just, you have to have a reserve, you have to look to the future a little bit, you just, 'cause it's just, you know, we already had one guy, he had it, our taxes are there, so this is high, we just can't say, here you go.
Chad?
We need to strike a balance between, um, saving dollars and having features and things that people want in a community. We can't just say that we're worried about $18,000 a year for water, or whatever it happens to be. I think we'd be silly to say that we wouldn't take ownership of, of these two parks when, when they're completed. It just, it needs to be done. They, they've been scrounging and, and fighting and selling cookies and hot dogs for the past however many years to try and get these things off the ground. We just need to take a stand and say that we want a damn spray park, sorry, excuse me, uh, spray park and a skate park in our town, and that we're willing to, to fully get behind this. Um, you know, the cost of the water is gonna be what the cost of the water is, I just, I just think we need to fully get behind this project and give them the support that they need so that they're able to get this project done.
Just one more comment, we have the wellness center, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say anything more.
Brad?
Oh, yeah, I have a, I have a few concerns. One, I'm really happy that, that we do have community groups that are, that are working so hard and volunteering and fundraising and that, and I think, I think it's terrific